It's totally inappropriate to imply that the fact that this resolution, which was asked for by the city, and produced long after Friday. I don't know whether, I've been on this entire call, I don't know whether everybody's gotten into the facts here, but you're just misleading the public on the facts. The fact of the matter is that we did this resolution yesterday afternoon, based upon the request of the city earlier this week, long after Friday. There's nothing illegal, inappropriate, or misleading about this. It is a very typical circumstance when things need to be moved. And in this case, since we've been working on this redevelopment plan for a year and a half, the idea that we would hold it up and perhaps delay the consideration by the city, because we didn't do something that we already agreed in the MOU that we signed with them last year to do, to me, is very disruptive, inappropriate for the authority. Far more than anything I've heard you say tonight.
Okay, Matt, Chair?
I would like to be able to respond to that.
File me.
Because counsel just said that I am misleading the public. Is that what you just said, Harold?
I think you've heard him.
I think you're misleading the public in saying that there was any misleading of the public, yes. There was no agenda on Friday, there was no resolution on Friday. This was requested this week.
Requested by who?
It's a classic last-minute start. And the fact that it was done in that fashion is under no circumstances, since you asked us for an opinion, you're implying it's inappropriate. Under no circumstances is it inappropriate.
I received, I have received two opinions from your law firm tonight. One from you, and one from Matt. I requested guidance on the plain text of the Open Public Meetings Act, and Matt had previously, both, had previously guided me in saying that there was either, if I was aware of anything misleading related to this resolution. I then replied that yes, I have evidence. We then went into closed session, I then shared that evidence with the remainder of the board.
Well, I heard the closed session discussion of that, James, and I didn't hear any evidence whatsoever. I, I heard your supposition about asking for something on Friday that didn't exist. That's all I heard.
If I may, Commissioner, if I may, to clarify, the opinion I gave you was almost identical to the one that's being given to you now, that this was done at a properly noticed, regular meeting, at which point any action can be taken. The only issue would be if you had clear evidence that there was intent to mislead the public, and that an agenda was distributed without this, in a clear effort to mislead the public. As opposed to a late item, and again, I pointed out to you that motions are made all the time from the floor. And you do have the statement that this was requested by the city yesterday, and I can even tell you that at least we were made aware of that yesterday, and the resolution was produced today. So that gives you a little bit more insight into the timing. I can't feed to exactly how the request came in from the city, maybe the director can do that, but once we were made aware of the request late yesterday, the resolution was prepared today, and was distributed today to the members of the board.
Okay.
I'm going to...
Okay, okay. One at a time, please.
Thank you.
So, I know Commissioner Russo, you had asked to speak, so, and after you, Vice Chair Seitz.
And I'm gonna preface this, because I didn't intend on really getting into any of this tonight, and I tried to give the benefit of doubt to my fellow Commissioner, not only in open session, but in closed session, because I did want to hear what he was alleging. I too, in my professional opinion, didn't hear any clear-cut evidence of any misleading of the public or this board. What I find very troubling is that we have a Commissioner who is not necessarily supportive of the plan to move the authority forward, rebuild our units, and provide safe, sound, and new housing for those residents. And this is just another attempt to try to prolong that, to try to muddy the waters of this process, to try to stop something that he personally disagrees with. It's equivalent to taking your basketball and leaving the court because you didn't get your way. And I'm very, very disappointed in the fact that we're actually even having this discussion, because to impugn someone's reputation, and to impugn their ability as the executive director, and indirectly implying that the staff of this authority was doing the same, is absolutely ludicrous. It's absolutely ludicrous. Everyone here, every staff member, including the executive director, break their backs day in and day out to make sure our residents live in decent housing. And we have an ability now, and we have the opportunity now, to provide new housing for every one of those residents. And this is just another silly attempt to stop that because someone didn't get their way. It's absolutely disgusting.
Vice Chair Seitz?
I'd like to respond after Vice Chair Seitz.
I second that motion.
I actually, I agree with Commissioner Russo, and I, I'm also frustrated, and I understand that Mr. Sanford might have different opinions or philosophies, but I think everybody who's sitting on this board made a decision that the redevelopment is a number-one priority, because we're hearing the stories, and security and redevelopment seems to be the number, or number one and two. And it's sort of frustrating that we don't always agree on everything, but we should agree that the residents come first, we have to fix our issues, whether, whatever they be, we'll work together to fix the issues, and that we have to, regardless of our personal opinion, have to move the redevelopment forward, because it's not about us, we're not here for us, we're here for Barbara, for the residents, for everybody else. So I am extremely frustrated, because I put my faith in the executive director, I put my faith in the staff, and I know that they wouldn't do anything to hurt us or disappoint us, because they don't want to risk their job, they don't want to hurt their families, they're here to do a job, and that the criticism and the intuition that they're not doing a good job, and the harassment of the staff is not acceptable. I, you can't, I can't go to the president of NJCU and say, "I want to talk to him about, I have plenty of issues at work," and I can't go talk to him and say, "I have this, blah, 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 blah," because I would probably get fired. You can't, there's a way to handle issues, there's a way to work through issues. Attacking, to me, is the worst way to solve anything. Collaboration, cooperation is a better way.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna respond.
Okay, Commissioner.
Any attempt to mischaracterize what I am saying as a personal opinion is incorrect. These are my experiences, these are facts that I am experiencing. The director has lied to me. I am a member of this board, ergo, he has lied to this board. This is what I have experienced. If anybody has a disagreement on that, that's your prerogative. But I would be remiss to not share with the entire board and with the entire public that what is going on here is misleading. And to clarify on motives, as people have talked about their jobs and their money, I am a volunteer. I have volunteered for over 10 years to protect this housing authority. And I have been insulted many times by having my commitment to this housing authority questioned. And I would like to, I have to remind people that in the depths of COVID, I spent tens of thousands of dollars to get face masks to protect people's lives here. Yeah, you're smiling, yeah.
Okay.
So much for appreciation. Do not cast, I ask the public, do not cast this aside as some personal grievance. There is a real attempt to mislead the public, that is why I'm here. I swore an oath, and I am fulfilling that oath.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanford. I just want to say that month after month you come here, and you are very disrespectful, not only on this board, but to the director and to the staff, and it's not right. And I'm pulling myself away from my chair position and talking to you as a resident. For the last 10 years that you have been here, the only thing you probably have done is give us masks. I don't see you at any event that we have. I don't see you support any resident in this housing authority. So for you to sit here and with this authority that you're doing so much for us, I can count on one hand how many resolutions you probably have passed to help us, the resident. And I'm not speaking to you as a chair, I'm speaking to you as a resident, okay? So do not sit here and undermine the hard work that this board puts in, because we do not all get along, we do not all have the same opinion on this board, regardless of what you think, we do not. But when we come in here, we are professionals, and we, we try to do the best that we can, because our best, our, our position is to help the residents. Something that you have not done since you have been reappointed to this board. Again, this is my personal opinion as a resident, and not as the chairwoman. What I'm gonna ask you now as the chairwoman is to stop being as disrespectful as you have been month after month with the director and with the staff. They do not deserve that, they do work hard, as Commissioner Russo said, as Commissioner Seitzman, and I see it every day, because I live here, you don't. You go home to your condo every day, right? Or to your homes? I live here, I live through the mud, where the buildings are falling apart, and every time we come here to put something together for our residents so we could have better, better homes, you're the first one to say no. So don't tell me that you're on this board to benefit the residents. You may be on this board, but it's definitely not to benefit the residents. Can we move on?
I'm going to respond to that. I am going to ask the public to remember Chair Reyes's speech.
Absolutely, please do so. I have always stand by what I said, I never hide from what I said. If I said it, I said it, and I stand by it.
Good.
And I'm so glad it's in the minutes, so thank you so much, and we can move forward.
I hired Michael Garcia.
Good for you.
I hired this guy.
Good.
And this guy has lied to me.
Call the vote, Director.
And for that reason, he has lost all faith.
That's great, that's fine, that's your opinion. Director, you have my full support, can you please call the vote?
Anthony Forbes.
Uh, as we say, I double this.
Andrew Impostado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yeah.
Barbara Renn.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Emphatically I.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so we are done with the resolutions, we can now go back to the report, to the director's report?
Thank you. So, it's been long, I will try, I will try. He's already, he's already, he's already looking at me. I can feel it, I can feel your eyes, okay.
Too quick that we've got...
Yeah, yeah, we'll try to be as quick as we can, although I've got some things to say. This month has been a challenge. As many of you know, I was diagnosed with a serious case of COVID earlier in the month, and I was confined to my house, not only that, but I was one sick puppy for a number, a number of days. I'm proud of my staff for covering my workload and standing in for me during my illness. I was finally cleared to come back this past Tuesday, and guaranteed that I am not contagious by my doctor in any way, shape, or form, and very, very happy to be back, so.
Need a mask?
You sure you don't got the cooties?
What, is that why you're online?
I was cleared for no mask by my doctor, so I'm good. As we all know, the federal government averted a shutdown at the last minute this past month, and of course, that will affect us in the long run, of course. However, and this was important in one of our training sessions and working this out, as we talked to the officials at HUD, that the housing authority, if they were to close down in November, our calculation is that we should be very, very solid until at least February. We have enough money to operate, we're good. We can, we can survive a shutdown. Now, if this lasts more than a few months, say they shut down in November, so we got December, January, into February, we're good. During that time, we're gonna have to start talking about what's next, what's next, what's next, to cover our bills, make our payrolls. But we're good for a few months, so, and I'm optimistic about that. We've never seen a shutdown last that long. Well, yeah, you know, I mean, they may fight for a month, but we're good. If they fight for that long, we are gonna be very solid, so don't worry, residents. We've got enough money to keep the lights going, the heat on, our staff paid, all of that good stuff. I will be holding my quarterly round of meet-and-greet get-togethers for all of our sites in November, so a lot of these issues, you know, those meetings that we have, where I'm here, will be having one in November, so we'll be able to address those with you before the holidays begin. We will be reviewing safety, maintenance, and security concerns as usual, but we'll also be discussing some new regulations that are coming down from HUD regarding some aspects of rent calculations and lease provisions, so we're gonna be talking...
But we don't want to talk, we want a resolution.
I know, we'll be talking to you about those, those provisions that are coming down from HUD. To that end, I would expect that in November, December, we will have a resolution in front of the board to adopt some changes in our ACOP that HUD's gonna be soon publishing. We continue to work closely with HPD and the residents. Councilman Cohen has left, but I do want to thank him for the kind words he said, because he, he understands, he's in touch with me consistently, and he's, we're in touch together with the police department consistently. He knows what it takes to actually deal with some of these issues, because he's here and involved, so, thank you, Phil. We do, well, I said that earlier already, we do background checks, we do make that happen. We have received a special security grant. Last time I reported that we had applied for it, we have received it. Yay, Corinne, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Oh, she's not here, Chris.
Some more good reading.
Oh, she's there, I can see her.
So, thank you, Corinne, Hoboken Housing Forward. You have already passed this, and I wrote this to say that you hadn't passed it yet. So thank you for passing that, that resolution that lends our support to what I believe is a, is a very good, solid redevelopment plan. I think it pushes us forward in the right direction. I had understood from the planning board, would be on 11-9, that was my information anyway, grateful it happened sooner, great. And to the council for a second reading the week after that, but that's from Chris Brown over at the city. Our legal counsel did have a small change regarding the effective years of the plan and the zoning. We do expect that to be incorporated into the plan that we will talk to you about once it passes through the planning board and goes from there. Once that redevelopment plan has final approval by the city, our team's next task will be to develop and publish that request for proposals for development partners. We do expect to have the special development legal counsel contract that you had passed a couple of months ago, signed by this coming week. So we will be ready with development legal counsel, once the plan is in, in shape, and approved by the city, and that's crucial. We have to have that legal counsel to go out for that RFP, so I'm looking forward to that. Reno Kavanaugh, if you remember, was who you selected, who we selected, and I think they're just an excellent firm, so I think we'll have good representation. We do, we did publish our RFP for a capital needs plan. We should have that to the board next month, when we get together. That plan is what's gonna take us over the next 10 years to show us how we're spending our capital fund. How much will go to consulting, how much will have to be invested in our redevelopment, and after all, we still will have buildings, we still will have residents that are not yet redeveloped. So we're gonna have to put that money aside to make sure we have enough money. This firm will help us with all of those decisions as we go down the line. It is something that HUD's requiring that we do as we go into redevelopment. We continue to meet regularly with our, our team, our enterprise partners, Health First Patrick and HUD. Our current goal that we're working on this coming week is to work on expediting the submission of applications to what is known as the HUD Special Operations Center. This is an approval that we would get from SAC office for demolition disposition of our properties. Once that is approved, those properties will just wait for us to do the development, get the money put aside, but that takes us in a significant step toward making sure we're on the right track. We do as well have some changes to our admin plan for Section 8, our public housing ACOB, and the current five-year and annual plan as submitted to HUD. These will be coming to you and to everyone else over the next few months. We are having a large meeting next week on anticipated planning for that. Our HHA newsletter is in your packet today, thank you again, Corinne, and we expect to have our Hall of, our next Hall of Fame mid-December. I think we're looking for December 15th, if I'm not mistaken. So we are looking forward to that. Anyone again has any ideas, we're glad to take names for someone we might honor. I continue to meet with residents, and residents, so many of you have my cell phone. Carmen calls me, other people call me, feel free, if you've got an issue, call. That's what we're here for, okay? Thank you. Our, we're meeting with our FIAC to identify funds for the next phase here. A full report of punch list items is being produced by the architect for our first phase of improvements here. H4H did meet on September 26th, our next meeting is October 24th, and we are inviting the Hoboken Public Schools to attend that, to start our planning with the schools. What are we gonna look like, what's our schedule, what's, what impact might we have on the schools? So we're looking forward to starting that discussion, and I want to thank Barbara for making that connection as well. Thank you, Barbara. Our special capital funding for Harrison is under design, going well, should be done soon. Emergency generator work is in process, just frustrated on the supply chain. We still don't have the generators. We still keep hitting them over the head with it, we don't have the generators yet. Everything's ready, they've actually been working, because they anticipate having them soon, so they've been doing the very final, ready for hookup. So when they get here, we can put them in and move. Monroe Gardens boiler replacements, boiler replacement bids have been submitted. That was in front of you this evening, and we rejected those bids to go out and to rebid them. We continue to work on our REAC and INSPIRE inspections. Our sprinkler head contract that you approved last month is actually underway. We're going into apartments and repairing sprinkler heads. Our interior door replacement project is almost complete. Our plaster work list is getting shorter and shorter. And our window repair, we've got our fingers crossed. We have applied for a special grant to replace windows at Andrew Jackson, so keep your fingers crossed to make that happen. Our sidewalk repair work is complete. Our parking registration initiative is underway, particularly on our family units, folks. You have a little bit of a different parking registration here at the elderly disabled than we have downtown and elsewhere, all downtown. So I, for the record, and we are advertising this, Harrison, Andrew Jackson, please register your cars. We don't want to tell you, but we will.
Director, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but I know that it has been published on Facebook and social media, but I actually, personally, as well as other residents who don't follow social media, they've heard it from word of mouth, they haven't received anything at home, so can flyers please send out?
We'll make sure we get door-to-door.
Please, thank you.
We will. Talked about that today. But I think that, that will solve a lot of issues with our parking, once that goes into effect. We are accepting rent online through our web portal. We do have a 95% occupancy rate for public housing, 96% here at Fox Hill, which is good performance. We have our vacancy numbers attached.
Excuse me, Director.
Yes.
Excuse me, Director, what's the national average of occupancy?
Our national, the national average in public housing occupancy is, last time I looked, was about 92%.
Oh, so we're right, we're right in step with you.
Not only in step, we're better than in step.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that's, that's really HUD's goal, is to keep us at least at 95%. My goal is eventually 98%, and that's where I want to get us. But right now, we're, we're knocking it out of the park for HUD, they're very happy with us. And I'm very happy with the staff. We've got Frank, we've got Jackie back here.
Jackie.
Jackie left us. Jackie handles our, our contracting on unit turnover, so I want to give her some kudos. They communicate well. Thank you for asking that, Reverend. I just looked that up a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, it's noted to be mentioned that we're at the top half of that.
We are, absolutely. We are, absolutely. Our account aging report on TARS, we continue to work on our, collecting our rent levels, again, an issue that housing authorities have across the country. I think that we do, well, I know, we do not want to evict anyone, we just don't. However, you know, we have to collect our rent to operate, and HUD's putting pressure on us as well, as many other housing authorities across the country. The HUD field office is actually copying our routine and what we're doing here, where we are asking folks to come in and do repayments, but when they don't, we'll be going to court with them. Now, once we get into court, normally, a repayment agreement is done with a family that's sanctioned by the judge and cosigned by the judge. Now, once a family breaks that repayment agreement, that is usually when you go toward possession of the unit. So, we're working closely with families, we don't wanna go toward the eviction if we can help it. We are working on the award of our VAS vouchers that we got, we are gonna be doing some meetings and probably an RFP on that in the very, very near future. Our maintenance department is currently accepting applications for additional part-time building maintenance workers, and we are working on our cycle for cleaning and waxing our hallways. As you know, the prices came in, we figured it was kind of high, so we're looking at a couple of alternatives. If you've got a specific cleaning, please call into your manager's office. We have done plumbing projects this cycle, our maintenance unit repair special projects by outside contractors, it was a little slow, we only did one this time, and I have a new report for you, which is a boiler report. This is a new report that covers the work of our boiler crew, led by our supervisor, Greg Walensky. Our boiler systems are up and running, thanks to the hard work of Greg, Louis Dipron, and our contractor with Boiler Systems. They're not always given the credit that they deserve. Cold weather comes, things are working, yay. They're working hard out there on those very complicated and old systems. We continue to work hard on our extermination issues, we just keep hitting it and hitting it. We're looking to put a Let's Talk Trash initiative out. We have good news on the finance side, we believe that we are closed out with the HMFA billing for the front PHA, that's been on our agenda here for about six months. We've gotten everything we need, their frontline staff says we're good. They've got everything they need. So, now they give it to the uppity ups, and we're gonna get a letter soon saying, "We're good, close out, here's the rest of the money," so, yay, that's been a long project. You know, that started with elevator replacement way back when. So, on the, I've got two more things, Resident Services, and then I've got one more thing. Danny Perez couldn't be with us tonight, he wanted me to highlight that the great work that Hoboken Grace does, their One Day of Service got rained out on the big rain, so they're back to next year. Youth Stalker is going on on Saturday nights on the field, love that. Amazing True Society, Ray's group is working well, he's providing tutoring, homework help, guitar lessons, and women's self-defense workshops. So, you can come through us, you can come directly to them if you wanna get in on self-defense workshops and the things that Ray's doing out there. On the 28th, we're having our Familyhood Truck or Treat, so that's gonna be on Fourth Street, right in front of our office, so come on down in your best ghoulish outfits. Lars?
Sammy.
Sammy, can you please pass this out? This was written this afternoon, so it was before the discussion tonight, but I will read this into the record as part of my executive director report. And what this is, is a special statement by myself addressing concerns about Commissioner James Sanford. I find Commissioner Sanford's strategy of dropping innuendo regarding my honesty, and that continued tonight. As executive director of the Hoboken Housing Authority, repugnant and dishonest, my professional staff and I worked hard and honestly. Since arriving at HHA, I have corrected bid deficiencies, as evidenced by clean audits of our bidding system for years, under my guidance. For example, HHA has gained the trust of the HUD area office by their exemplary handling of purchasing and procurement. Evidence of this is that HHA has been removed from the disciplinary zero threshold requirement that was in place when I arrived. This alone demonstrates HUD's opinion that my administration is professional and can be trusted. By any measure, HHA has been very successful under my guidance. HUD agrees with this analysis. I have received emails from Commissioner Sanford comparing me to past HHA administrators that are now in legal jeopardy. I will not allow these challenges to my staff and my integrity to stand unchallenged. Commissioner Sanford has not been forthright about exactly what his problem with my administration is. I have not heard this, but there is clearly something that he believes is amiss. I still do not know why he is so antagonistic toward my staff and I, because he will not tell me, or as far as I know, his peers, you, on the board. The damage that he is doing at a crucial time in our history is severe. I refuse to stand idly by while it has gotten to the point that staff members do not want to come to board meetings for fear of being unfairly interrogated by a board member. He is a commissioner that votes for seemingly no rhyme or reason against nearly all resolutions placed in front of this board, resolutions that represent hours of work by my professionals and hard-working staff and I. A bid process for, say, door replacement takes hours of staff and legal time to assure that the bidding process is a fair and honest one. Yet, his votes of no, over and over again, on that and most other resolutions, is an insult to both my staff and I. By that no vote, this is clearly an invalidation of the hard work of my staff and that we put into all aspects of operating this housing authority. My staff and I recognize this lack of support and are confused and frustrated by these actions, as are many HHA residents. In addition, Commissioner Sanford has become a laughingstock to the residents that regularly attend our meetings. It is hard for me to believe that he does not hear them belittling him, and by inference, the rest of the HHA board from the audience, as his usual refrains of no echo through the room. This behavior reflects poorly on HHA staff and the HHA board itself. Unless otherwise instructed by the entire board, I will continue to protect my staff by insisting that correspondence from board members be directed only to me. I have always been informed of and approved interactions with any board members that are beyond perfunctory inquiries. For example, if somebody says you did a good job, you can respond saying, "Thank you." I don't mind that. It is a shame, however, that my staff has had to come to me and ask for my protection by strictly enforcing this directive over the past months, and they have. This is because, and only because, they now feel threatened by his actions during board meetings and by his intimidating communications with HHA staff. Additionally, I will not subject my staff to cross-examination tactics by Commissioner Sanford or any other commissioner during a board meeting, although no other commissioner has presented themselves in that fashion. Any substantial question, request, or concern that commissioners have may be submitted to me in writing, and an appropriate response will be forthcoming. Our board meetings are not a forum for interrogation of HHA staff. Let me repeat that. Our board meetings are not a forum for interrogations of HHA staff.
Thank you for that action, Director.
Excuse me?
He said, "Thank you for the time."
Oh, thank you, sir. My staff is well aware of whistleblower protections. They know that, like Commissioner Sanford, they can go to the appropriate authorities to report any illegal activity at HHA. They know that they can come to me, to the board, to HUD Newark Office or the HUD Inspector General, to report any instances that may be illegal or improper. I have also shared this information with Commissioner Sanford on more than one occasion. My staff knows that I run a clean ship and will support them in weeding out any dishonesty found in my administration. They know that if they perceive a problem that they feel can't be shared with me, they can go to Chairman Reyes, they can go to any board member, or they can go directly to HUD. They know that they will be protected. By the same token, I believe that it is inappropriate by any commissioner to attempt to set up meetings with my staff without my knowledge or participation, and that has been going on. In closing, I request that Commissioner Stanford bring this inquisition to conclusion as soon as possible. As you may know, I have arranged for our legal counsel to set up a meeting with Commissioner Sanford, our legal counsel and our HUD representative, for the near future. I request that Commissioner Sanford have that meeting, so my staff and I can move on with the crucial business of providing the best housing for families in Hoboken with a board that supports the initiative in a rational and business-like manner. Thank you very much for listening, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director. Before we close, Director, I-
Do you not have any responding?
Did you ask to speak, Commissioner Stanford?
I'd like to speak.
Okay, well, once I'm done, then you can have the floor. I just wanted to say, in reference to the snapshot of Resident Services, I am so happy to inform you guys that this week, Hopes did receive some funding for a food pantry in our family resource center at the Housing Authority. So, it's not going to be, let me just make sure, to let you guys know, it's not gonna be a big food pantry, let's get it together, it's only two bedrooms we have in there, but we make it work. So, we are going to have items there for individuals, families that are in desperate need of food. It's not only gonna be open to the Housing Authority residents, it will also be open to anyone in the city during business hours. Again, I think this is amazing, I know that the food pantry that the Hoboken Community Center does is amazing, they're always so helpful, but I think this one hits different. It's in our home, and we're here, and we're always there, and it's gonna make it so much easier for us to help our families in need. So, if anyone, we are going to be doing a press release, we're going to invite everyone over so that they can check it out, once it's done, we just got it again, we need to purchase some stuff before we put it in there, and we would like to invite the board and everyone to go check it out, so, I think that's great news, and, you know, just a little bit of good news.
Will you be accepting contributions of food?
We can, as, I mean, as much as we can hold, again, we use, I wanna say, I mean, Sammy's been there, I think we use even the tub as part of our, of ours to hold our stuff, we use every nook and crack in that, in the two-bedroom. But I think we can, again, our goal is to service our residents, the ones that need it the most, but that's not to say that we don't have individuals who in the past have not, have not faced food insecurities, and they are facing it today. So, we are here, we have no judgment, whoever needs it, once it's open, we're there to help you guys, so, I'll keep you guys posted.
Awesome.
And Commissioner Stanford, you can now speak.
I thank the Director for his prepared statement, and I say to the public, and I say to everyone who will hear this, that I am unfazed by this attempt to ambush me and derail my oversight of a federally funded organization. I've sworn an oath, I will follow that oath, no matter where it leads. I reserve the right to reply in detail to this statement, and I will converse with the appropriate authorities and counsel. In the meantime, I have questions on the Director's report.
Motion to close?
Yeah, still questions.
I apologize.
Director, I sent several emails to Corinne Richmond, is she here?
No, she's not. Well, she is on the line, but I would again ask you to direct any questions to me.
Okay. Through subsequent emailing of your staff who have refused to communicate with me, you have indicated that you gave a verbal command to staff on this matter. When did that verbal command occur?
Well, I don't have a timeline at my fingertips this afternoon, this evening, so I would ask you to request that information of me in writing, not to Corinne, not to Frank, not to anyone else, not to the attorneys, to me. Do business. Ask me when that occurred, we will give you a timeline, I will give you a timeline of the progression of my instructions to my staff.
Director Recco, I have already written in writing to you requesting this information, and you have refused to provide it.
Well, I'll be glad to take a look at that.
No, really, honestly, I appreciate your concerns, I appreciate your questions, but this is not, it's not appropriate for back and forth between the two of you. The Director has asked you to put it in writing, so put it in writing again, and so you have no gripe at that point. Put it in writing, you've heard it here publicly, let him respond to you in writing, it's highly inappropriate to continue to do this, I mean, I don't know how long did I have to-
This is not highly inappropriate, this is not highly inappropriate. I have requested in writing and verbally on the public portion multiple times, and the Director refuses to answer.
I think that the problem is, okay, as Commissioner, Councilman and Commissioner Russo has stated, and I think everybody's frustration is the same, the Director has asked that it be put in writing. If you'd like, you can send it to the Director and TC me on it, and I will make sure that the Director will get back to you and provide you an answer. Unfortunately, we, I don't know of any communication that you have had with him, but you're saying that he's not answering you, so as the chairwoman, I would appreciate if you put me on the email so I can make sure that he does that.
I'm clarifying for the record that this request has already been put in writing.
Well, he's asking you to do it again. So, if you can do that again, we'd appreciate it. Do you have any further questions?
I have many further questions.
Okay, so can we move on?
You know what, I'm going to allow you guys to just get on with your evening, because I know that no one wants me to ask any questions here.
You are welcome to ask any question you'd like.
That is, that is very clear, I'm not allowed.
Commissioner, I have not censored anyone on this board from speaking, but at this point, if you're stating that you would not like to have any more questions, or you choose not to ask any more questions, that's fine, so can we have a motion to close?
Motion, second.
All in favor? Thank you, have a good night.
Good night, everyone.